We're waiting to get the.
Recording started.
Live recording.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
Oh, we can receive from the chairman.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pender County Planning Board Meeting for January the fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'd like to welcome all of you here. I'm gonna start with a roll call. Mister Jordan, I am present. Mister Buchanan.
Present.
Mister Bowdoin.
Present.
Mister Pitts.
Present.
Mister Techie. Mister Grunfest. And Miss Moska. Our absent. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for Pender County. We serve as an appointed board by the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. We have two cases scheduled tonight on the agenda and one tentatively to be added. Before we begin, it is important for everyone to understand some facts relating to this meeting. There is an imposed time limitation for all public hearing comments, which is limited to two minutes individually or five minutes if you are representing a group. Applicants and/or their representatives are excluded from any time limitation so that they may have adequate time to present their request. The county attorney will keep time for each comment. Comments should be limited to only those issues concerning whether the rezoning, text amendment, or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Cases that are heard by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of the hearing is to gather information so that we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, neighbors, and community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the United Unified Development Ordinance and statutes of North Carolina. Certainly, certain mutually agreed upon conditions may be imposed on master development plans and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Before we get started, are there any board members who stand to directly benefit financially from any decision that is made tonight? If not, we will continue with the public hearing. Let us all stand for a brief invocation. Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening with humbled hearts and open minds, asking that you give us guidance so that we may make the proper decisions that will be pleasing to the current and future residents of Pender County. We ask this in your holy name, amen. Mister Pitts will lead us in. Plaid to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm entertaining a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I do have an item to add to the agenda.
Yes.
Um, this is a result of the request the board made at the last meeting. It was for staff to provide a resolution that the board would consider for adoption pertaining to the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to pursue the adoption or to pursue the the writing essentially of a new future land use plan as well as a new unified development ordinance.
Yes.
And this document would be, uh, if approved, would be submitted with our budget request for the next fiscal year.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to add, uh, said item to the agenda. Uh, should we add that at the end of the public hearings, after the public hearings, uh, to like, let's say nine B? Or right before ten?
Yeah, I would add, yeah, yes, sir, I agree with that. You can add that after the public hearing section.
That's my motion.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, that is for the, the addition of that item to the agenda. Do we need to vote on the, make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, sir, you would make a motion to adopt the agenda with the, with the discussed changes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All righty, moving right along. I would like, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from the December sixth meeting of two thousand and twenty-two.
I have one second to review something there. I apologize.
That's right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, meeting.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving right along. We are ready for our first presentation.
Uh, we don't have any presentations under this section.
Okay. Is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Uh, no, sir.
Not for public comment. All right. So, uh, public hearings. The rezoning of two thousand and twenty-two, days thirty-nine, general use rezoning of one tract of land in the tops of township from rural agriculture to general business.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, and members of the board, good evening.
Thank you.
Hope everyone's doing well. Um, our first application on this evening's agenda is a general use rezoning. Uh, Michael Nado, applicant on behalf of Earl Brown, owner, is requesting the approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone one tract totaling approximately one point eight-five acres of land from the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to the GB General Business Zoning District. Here before you, we have the zoning map of the area. The subject property is gonna be outlined in blue. And as you can see, property is zoned, RA, Rural Agricultural. To the south of this subject property, you have some general business zoning as well as across US Highway seventeen. And to the north of this property, you have some residential zoning as well in the form of RP, Residential Performance. And, uh, butting the rear portion of this tract is some industrial zoning in the form of IT, Industrial Transitional. Moving along, we have the, an aerial view of the subject property. Um, maybe hard to make out, but there are two structures currently on this property. Um, I'll, I'll note here, should the property be rezoned this evening to the, I'm sorry, recommended for approval and eventually, um, proceed to the Board of County Commissioners? Um, and approved, these two structures, uh, would in turn become legal non-conforming structures. So, the general business land use, uh, categories, uh, there are one use permitted by right, that is a residential use. That would be upper story residential. Um, and there's one use permitted with a special use permit, that would be a cottage occupation. The, uh, commercial uses that are permitted by right within this zoning district, um, consist of those in the land use classifications of construction of buildings, artisan manufacturing, motor vehicle and parts dealers, non-store retailers, real estate and rental and leasing. And there are obviously a few more. There are a total of eighty-three uses by right and fifteen uses permitted with a special use permit. We have your associated setbacks with the general business zoning district that I'll leave up here for just a second.
Is the front, I'm sorry, back on the setbacks, is the front off of seventeen?
So, not measured from the center line of US Highway seventeen, but the edge of the right of way to the front property line.
Okay.
So, planning staff, um, did reach out to the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, to gather some roadway capacity data for this segment of US Highway seventeen. Um, more specifically between its intersections with White Bridge Road and Pearson's Lane. Um, as you can note, uh, the volume does exceed the planned capacity for this segment of US Highway seventeen. The subject property is located within the neighborhood mixed use, future land use category, uh, within the Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Uh, this future land use category allows for a transition between more intense commercial office and residential development to, uh, lesser dense, lower density residential neighborhoods. More so, this future land use category, um, is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that will provide services and entertainment to residents within a three-mile radius. Planning staff did find the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent with not only the future land use map, uh, but also three policies within the Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Um, furthermore, the allowable uses within the requested zoning district are compatible with the surrounding area, uses that are established within the surrounding area. Um, and, and for that reason, planning staff respectfully recommends approval of the zoning map amendment as detailed, uh, within this presentation and the staff report in the board's packets. The applicant is with us this evening. Um, sta, planning staff is also able to answer any questions that the board may have of us at this time. That will conclude our presentation for this case.
What, what is currently on the property?
Two structures, um, I, I defer to the applicant to speak more as to kind of the status of those structures. Appears that there's some sort of a, a shed and accessory structure towards the rear portion that she might be able to make out.
Yeah.
Um, in a, in an older dwelling here.
So, it's not occupied?
Not to my knowledge. Um, I would again defer to the applicant.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff? Do we have any questions for staff? Thank you.
Absolutely. And, and Mister Chairman, the only sign up we have for this case is the applicant, Mister Michael Nado.
Okay. When you come forward, please state your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Michael Nado with, uh, Creative Commercial Properties, uh, my home address, four-six-five Chaplain Road in Hampstead. And, uh, I have little to add, just that, except that, uh, this, uh, uh, property was, uh, occupied for many decades by, uh, Miss Ellen Brown, who passed away last year. And, uh, of course, for most, the overwhelming majority of that time, there was no zoning in Pender County. And when the first, uh, zoning came around in the eighties, uh, it was zoned, zoned RA, but everything was zoned RA throughout the whole entire east Pender, and it allowed business and commercial uses as well as residential. Uh, but over the subsequent years and a couple of zoning codes later, uh, somehow that one parcel still remained RA as every single other parcel around it got redone. And I don't know quite how that happened, but think, uh, just would, uh, suggests it's certainly appropriate for a business property, uh, fronting the highway to, to have a business use site. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Um, I have one. What is, uh, the property to the south is, I mean, I, I see that that, well, all the properties to the south there that front seventeen are general, zone general business.
Yes.
Are there any businesses located there currently, or is it just, uh?
Immediately to the south and wrapping around the back, there's about twelve point seven acres there that, uh, a, a, a local individual's been working on, uh, permitting an office warehouse. Kind of, uh, retail in the front and office warehouse in the rear. Um, but that I believe is still in the, in the permitting and
Okay.
state permitting process and the like. I don't think they've got the final zoning approval yet. So, that's proposed. And then just to the south of that is the Singleton Property.
Right.
Variety of businesses there of, um, selling small modular buildings, uh, wood products. Uh, he's got several, uh, storage business back there, so several, uh, kind of light industrial uses a little further to the south.
Right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
No.
Entertaining a motion to, um...
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
I mean, I haven't been around it yet.
From a planning perspective, it almost looks like spot zoning, but in reverse.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to zone around it. So, it, it, rezoning this, to me, becomes consistent. So, um...
Terminology.
So...
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, uh, that this, uh, presentation is consistent with Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan, specifically, uh, five dot, um, one dot D E and K.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. It's been approved. All righty.
So, yeah, we have another case.
Greg's got the floor tonight.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, our second, final general use rezoning application on this evening's agenda. Um, again, Michael Nado, applicant on behalf of John Rowland, owner, is requesting the approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately zero point five-three acres of land that stretches across two tracts, um, that together consists of approximately one point six-five acres. Um, and that request is going from the RP Residential Performance Zoning District to the GB General Business Zoning District. So, here we have a zoning map of the area. The subject property is outlined in black. Um, and the area of the subject properties that are to be rezoned, that are petitioned to be rezoned, are shaded in a hatch pattern outlined in blue. Um, so you can see this blue area here would be the portions of the two subject properties that are being requested before you this evening to go from the RP Residential Performance Zoning District to the General Business Zoning District. So, here we have an aerial view of the subject property, um, again outlined in, in a greenish color. Uh, we still have the portion of that subject property that is, uh, before you tonight, to be rezoned from the RP Residential Performance Zoning District to the GB General Business District. There, there are, there is an existing structure located just off of Saint John's Church Road here. Um, again, I'm unaware of the occupancy status of that structure. Uh, I would defer to the applicant for any questions related to it. And again, within the general business, um, zoning district, there are, there's one use permitted by right, that is residential use. That would be upper story residential. Um, so you would, you would picture an apartment above a retail, uh, business on the bottom floor. And there's one use permitted with a special use permit, that would be a cottage occupation. And, and again, there are eighty-three uses permitted by right within this zoning district, um, and fifteen uses permitted with a special use permit. Again, we have some roadway capacity data for you this evening. Um, US Highway seventeen between Alfonso Nixon Drive and Williams Love Grove, Grove Church Road. Um, as you can see, the volume again exceeds the planned capacity for this segment of US Highway seventeen. Subject properties are located within two future land use classifications. Um, as you can see from the future land use map on the screen here. Um, this pin here is obviously located within the medium density residential future land use category, while closer towards US Highway seventeen, uh, this portion of the subject property is within the neighborhood mixed use future land use category. And that future land use designation is intended to, uh, allow for a transition between more intense commercial uses, um, to lesser dense residential uses. And again, the intent behind this future land use category is to provide services, um, to surrounding residents within a three-mile radius. Planning staff found the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent, um, with the future land use map partially and three policies within Pender two-point-oh. Planning staff, I will note here, we, we did find it obviously to be inconsistent with a portion of the future land use map, um, but given the context of this request and its relation, um, to surrounding zoning and future land use categories, um, planning staff respectfully recommends approval of the zoning map amendment as detailed, uh, within the staff report, the board's packet, in this presentation. Again, staff is, is more than willing to answer any questions you all may have, because obviously this request is, can be a little complex. Um, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have of us. The applicant did prepare two slides, two images, um, to share before you all tonight.
So, the, um, the, uh, piece of property that's, uh, outlined there where it says neighborhood mixed use, in, in my, that, that is currently zoned general business?
That's correct. Let's flip back to the, to the zoning map.
Okay.
I wish I could pull both of them up on the screen.
Uh, it, it's fine. I just, I wanted, just for clarification.
That's correct. So, this portion of the, of the two parcels, um, that would, that is being requested be rezoned to that general business zoning district, does actually adjoining existing general business zoning.
Okay, so the, the areas that are in question are currently residential performance?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, um, parcels are very unique.
That, uh, unique is a good word, that's right.
And the request, the boundary line request for the change is also unique to a degree, but not too aggressive. Was that a, uh, topic that staff weighed in on to give the approval?
Uh, personally, I don't, I don't believe that was it.
Okay.
The topic staff weighed in on, um, Mister Brantley, I would, I would ask if there were any conversations on, on the unique shape, if you will, of that portion of the parcel to be rezoned?
Yeah, we'll, and we'll defer to the applicant for the kind of, to give us an idea of the possible future of the site in terms of, you know, recombination of the, of the parcels, which wouldn't have any bearing on the approval tonight. Um, but staff, you know, after discussing with the, you know, after discussing with applicant the kind of peculiarity of this request, you know, we feel that it is a reasonable request in that essentially they are trying to achieve a, a bit of a larger, uh, general business area to support, um, a commercial opportunity more adequately.
Okay. Is this, uh, let's say that this, uh, that purple's red and the applic, the, a developer or an owner has control of the parcels as it does in the situation. The use that's put in the GB, could stormwater ponds be utilized in the RP, the, uh, RP to achieve those uses?
No, sir.
Okay.
They could not be. If they are associated and serve the commercial development on, within the general business zoning district, um, that would not be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I take it that the, um, there's a single owner for these two parcels?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Now, what, it, there would, I'm sure that there would be a buffer, um, between, um, the parcel pin number three-two-nine-three-dash-five-four-dash-two-four-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-zero between it and the adjoining, uh, piece of parcel to the, to the north of that?
Absolutely. Um, and it would actually be in the form of our most dense buffer type, um, which is a type C buffer, um, typically ranges between fifteen to twenty-five feet of vegetation.
Okay. Do you?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I was gonna say, is the current, uh, again, back to my scenario of being, that purple being red, is the current wooded area enough to support that buffer, or would more need to be done there?
That would have to be explored and, and proven on a survey, um, that existing vegetation on that parcel does meet or exceed the buffer requirements of a type C buffer.
Okay.
Um, so that's something that an engineer or a landscape architect would be able to certify.
Okay.
Can you go back to the, uh, the aerial view? Is there a residence, um, to the north of that, uh, parcel? On that, on the parcel to the north of that?
This pin here?
Uh, yes, that's correct. I can't, it looks like one, but I can't, the, uh, the tag is...
It appears that there is some sort of structure, um, not necessarily visible from the road, to my recollection, but, um...
There is a home on that, on that property.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
And the, the business in front of that, what business, what business is that? Right.
Each store would have to have it.
Sure, right, these two, these two stores here.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a retail store? Okay. All right. Do we have any additional questions for staff?
One, one thing I wanted to clarify, um, and there was some miscommunication with the WMPO, which provides us traffic data. In the report, it stated that this road was overcapacity. It's not, in fact, overcapacity. So, this proposal wouldn't potentially add additional burden overcapacity even further. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll turn it over to the applicant here who has, um, two images they would like to share with you all.
All right. Thank you. Please come forward.
Once again, Michael Nado, four-six-five Chaplain Road in Hampstead. Um, let me, I guess, clarify the, uh... The, the property to the south of this, that, that fronts on Highway seventeen is a property that I own and am planning to develop, uh, build two buildings, uh, add about a million dollars to a tax base and bring a, bring a business from, uh, from Oslo County to, to Pender County. And it was necessary to have a little land in the back for some additional parking. And so, that's what sort of motivated the whole process, uh, to get started. But I did want to point out, we have had a fully approved jurisdictional determination by the Corps of Engineers. I have a map here, and just wanted to draw your attention to the yellow highlighted wetland in the upper right-hand corner. I have a map here, and just wanted to draw your attention to the yellow highlighted wetland in the upper right-hand corner there. A close-up, I superimposed that into the map. And the point I'd like to make is of the point five, three acres applied for, a little less than point two acres is potentially in conflict with the future land use plan. However, half of that is unusable with the wetlands there. So it, from a practical standpoint, less than one tenth of an acre of that, of the, of the, of the residential part of the plan would actually be utilized in the general business use. And I'd asked Justin early on, should I just cut that piece from the yellow, just cut that yellow out of the zoning application, just reduce the non-conformity? And he indicated he'd just as soon keep the zoning line square with the lot lines. But I did just want to emphasize, the total non-conformity then would be well under one tenth of an acre. Like thirty by a hundred, like the size of this room, potentially. But as you can see, zoned, this property to the south is business, and of course, to the east there, as well as all. So it's consistent in, in both directions there. And the, and adjacent to the north there is Melvin London, I've met with him, he is, he is supportive of the rezoning. And again, did, we walked out there and saw that buffer and he's, he's happy with that.
Now, how far is the wetland off the property line?
About seventy-five, eighty, it's fifty-five feet deep and about eighty feet over.
And that's the location of the wetlands?
Highlighted in yellow, there on the, on the map, delineated by the core and approved.
Okay. How many parking spaces do you need that initiated this whole process with the county?
Oh, gosh, I didn't bring, you know, again, the, this, the, the plan is kind of aside from the zoning, you know, from, from a technical standpoint. But it's in the neighborhood of about fifty or so.
Fifty.
Two buildings from about seventy-five hundred square feet each, this plan, but again, that's.
I'm curious, what made you have to go through this to start, I'm just curious. But obviously, the reason doesn't really matter in this decision, because we have to look at it just as a rezoning, but I appreciate the information.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, in building the, building it for rental, I have tenants lined up.
Sure.
But there's gonna be another one and another one, so ultimately, the, from a, from a parking perspective, you want to have adequate parking for future uses as well, so you kind of want to make sure you're not short for, for, for future uses. Kind of a problem with that.
So just to clarify with the board, you know, the board shall not consider any specific uses of the property. They must consider all uses of the property that.
Yes, I understand. I, we, this board has also discussed parking requirements in the past, and I just was curious what the applicant thought process was. Having to pursue this.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Mr. Director, do we have any signups?
We have several signups, we have four total. We can start with Mr. Kurt Rusenko, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Oh, good. So please state your name and your address, sir.
My name's Kurt Rusenko, and I live at one, one, zero, nine, St. John's Church Road in Hampstead. I am a little baffled by the, why that needs to happen. It's getting pretty close to where I am, and I'm concerned about residential areas going over into business areas. And I, I really would like to see nothing done until there is a buffer in there, if anything. But that, that's getting pretty close to home. That's it.
Can, do we have a map where we can show where his, where his property is?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's actually directly to the west of the front portion of this parcel along St. John's Church Road. So it's directly to the west on this side of St. John's Church Road. Greg, if you could point that out.
Yes, sir, that's, no, to the north, that one. And that's his property there.
Okay. Thank you.
Miss. Our next signup is a, I can't make out the first name, but the last name I believe is Nixon. At Alfonso. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Please stand.
My name is Alfonso Nixon, and, uh, address is fifty-seven Alfonso Nixon Drive. And my beef is that, um, the corner, this usually be a straight block, you know, from one side to the other. And when they came in the survey, which I would like to put on hold until someone that, that properly, that knows the area coming in survey, because now surveying right, they're coming in and look like they're taking quite a bit of my land. And seemed like, I heard it say about the wetland, well, the wetland is where it's something like a little pond there. And, um, they want to move up on the hill away from the pond, where you got that, that flathead. Something like they want to, you know, for proper grain. So that's all I have to say, I would like for them to just put it on hold until we get the proper surveyor in there to do it right. I don't think they did it right.
Could, could we point out where Mr. Nixon lives? So.
It's the one, it's the one, the first one you pointed at a few minutes ago. That's Mr. Nixon's property.
Okay. Okay. And has a, and are you aware, Mr. Nixon, that a, a survey's been done, or is that?
Yes, but, uh, the survey that it did, like I said, all this was our property. In other words, my parents owned it, and it was thought out as a square block. And my sister had the first lot up on the corner. And, um, my brother had the last corner down there, and they come in and they got all different little corners, little states up there inside that square, that not supposed to be there, it's supposed to be just one square. If you had noticed the original lot, or about three lots with five acre each. That was, you know, like the Joneses had one, uh, five acre. It was two sister Joneses, two brothers, one had one set, and then the other, uh, brother had the other set. And then the Roland had the other set, these were squares. Okay, now, they come in and chopping mine, which is, see, I said Nixon, but the heirs of Rosefield, he's just chopping that up. And I think that they should wait until we get, get it squared up before they come in and zone it.
I mean, there, there would be a process if there's a disputed property boundary line, where there is, so if Mr. Nadeau does a, a survey and gets ready to record, of course, you're gonna probably see a surveyor out there, so you could mention to them that you think that's not the property line. But there would be an opportunity later to ensure that the property lines are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the next signup is a Ms. Jacqueline Hardest, Hardeston?
Yes, oh, Jacqueline.
Yes, ma'am.
The name is Jacqueline Hardeston, the address is two, four, three, ninety, US Highway seventeen North, Hampstead. Alfonso Nixon, who was just here, is my father, but I represent the heirs of Rosefield Jones, which is my great-grandfather. Okay, and as my father stated, I just would like to make sure it is properly surveyed to the family satisfaction. So they are clear and don't feel like they are losing their land before we move forward. Because everything in Hampstead seems like want to go commercial. And if you have parents of a certain age, you want to make sure that they are taken care of and understood and represented, and not actually their land taken from there. There is wetland in there, and it seems like every time you look around, the wetlands are steady being uprooted and destroyed. And I just want to make sure that the voices is heard and we are clearly represented. I understand they want to do commercial, but before they do that, I would just like to make sure that it is surveyed, so we could be a part. I understand it has been, but, um, I don't think we're very clear on that. Because if you said your land comes over here, and he said his land came over here, we gotta meet in the middle. And we're not meeting there right now. And it's not the whole process, it's making sure we're all on the same page, so we can move forward and be okay. And that, that's my claim, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next signup is Mr. Andrew Rahal.
And that's all the signs we have, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you.
I was gonna, I was actually just, would Mr. Nadeau like to comment on the, on the property line?
As I said, I had begun the process looking to get some additional land. And so we certainly began with the tax maps as shown here. And that's been the configuration of the tax map for, according to Mr. Roland, for, for decades. He's been paying taxes on what's outlined in black there. We, I've had a title search done. In fact, Mr. Roland has a mortgage on his property, so he said he has had title work done, and the bank, Nations Bank, has the loan on that, all that land in the black. In turn, Mr. Nixon's parcel is here. And the question arose in this area right over here, so he does not adjoin the rezoning area. But in turn, I had a survey commission, they said the deeds were very sketchy. From this person's land to that person's land in a lot of cases, and didn't have the, the calls and boundaries. So they did a great deal of research, and that dotted line indicates the survey they produced, which happens to match the county tax map as well. So I had suggested to Mr. Nixon, and so we had had this surveyed out about a month ago, the flags were out there, but they're kind of in the backyard, and Mr. Nixon hadn't noticed them. And so yesterday, for the first time, I got a call, and someone was back there cleaning up some of the stuff in back, and saying that Mr. Nixon had a, had a concern about it, had felt it was in the wrong place, felt the flags were in the wrong place, based on the relative location to his house up here, and in particular with this, this corner here. So I guess I would, so I suggested to him, then, I told my surveyors to go back and pull their research together. Their attorney is Ray Blackburn, who, our attorney Stephen Bailey. So I assured them, I guess, of a couple things. Number one being, Mr. Roland cannot deed me any of their land, they're concerned about losing land or, or having it taken in some fashion. Mr. Roland can only deed me what he owns, and, and certainly that's all I'm looking to buy. So it's not a, a function of trying to, trying to take something that's not willingly given there. But Mr. Nixon felt that the line came down through here, and then came cut down, potentially shaving some of this off, which ostensibly would leave, so in other words, he's saying this tract in red actually comes over a little bit further, I'm sorry about the shaking there. But obviously, that's zoned residential, so even if you rezoned it to commercial, and it turned out the line got scooched over a little, it would all be consistently commercial, instead of having a strip of residential, having split zoning on that lot, where the ninety-eight percent of it is, is, is commercial, and it's a little tiny strip that remains that way. So I think the title issue and title dispute, we want to work out, whatever it is, is what we'll do. When you look back, these properties were divided into big chunks over a hundred years ago. And there are large, straight lines, when you look at St. John's Church Road, the Highway seventeen, all the way up and down, these long, straight lines are manifested, where these tracks were deeded out originally. This is the one side of Mr. Roland's track, and according to Mr. Roland, this line is the straight line that used to go back through there, that part's no longer there. But that square, it was all square, it was all rectangular, and Mr. Roland understands that's his property now. He's, uh, he's probably about thirty or forty, and it was his dad's plan before him, so. All of it, there's a couple houses in the front, all the rest is wooded back there. So he said, you know, he, so he's been woods back there, and everyone runs through the woods, and so he said he certainly can't go back in the woods and find a property line, or nobody ever much worried about it. But I believe with the Nixons on the one side and the Rollins on the other, it has not been surveyed in many decades. And I just suspect over the course of time, as people use property and use a side yard and go down a little path or road, that the exact original deeds may be, may be lost. But my main point being, we want to make it right, we want to figure out the accurate thing, and we will certainly only buy from Mr. Roland what, what he has for sale. But I would argue as well that the specific rezoning in question that does not adjoin Mr. Nixon's, would not be ad, Mr. Nixon's lot would not be adversely affected by the decision on the crosshatched area there.
Right.
Adjacent.
So you're saying that the property line, there is a property line where the general business stops adjoining to Mr. Nixon's property?
Well, I, I.
Is that, I mean, I'm.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are, you, you're saying that that's a, that's a property line where the general business, right? That's Mr. Nixon's property line, right?
Yes, Mr. Yel, Nixon, Yel.
Okay, and that's a property line right there?
That's a property line, yes.
Okay, and you're saying that what, the, the area that you're, where you are seeking a zoning change is here? And that wouldn't affect.
Yes, and this is the Rosenfield area, which is also within the Nixon family, but again, that's already general business, obviously.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Not yet. These are complicated issues, and sometimes they, they're not really within our lane. Our role is a recommending body for the planning of Pender County to the Board of Commissioners. Now, certainly, if there's something going, that's inappropriate, that we will, yeah, I'd say it's inappropriate, but something that's alarming or something that would raise a concern, certainly we'll obviously listen to that, and that's possible. But it seems that there's a process in place, I believe, through surveying, meets and bounds, the title search, the legal process that would be able to determine the concerns of Mr. Nixon and his family. I'm not sure that we are the body to do that, but certainly we are the body to look at this to determine whether is this rezoning, if everything is up and up, is correct. Because currently, what we have to work on is that map, and our future land use map and our UDO. So I think that is what is up for discussion currently. Anyone else?
As I say, if I could follow on to that, I would just encourage the Nixon family to engage your own surveyor and go out if you think that that property line is. and go out if you think that that property line is, is not where it should be. And, um, have them do an independent survey and, um, and then you can present that or work that out with Mr. Nado. But, um, for our purposes here tonight, um, we're just looking at that hatched out area uh, as far as a rezoning and a recommendation to the commissioners.
Yeah, there's title and title insurance and all types of things involved in this process that's really outside of our scope. Um, but it's there for this very reason. And I think that's the avenue they need to be taken for this, uh, this particular concern and potential dispute, uh, not the planning board. Um, but certainly we appreciate it being aware of it because it does weigh into kind of thinking about it.
And I believe, Mr. Thurman, um, can you hear us better? We, we had a tough time hearing you there.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just gonna, but, uh, chime in. Um, one, I am not giving advice to either the applicant or the neighboring property owners, wanna make that clear. Um, but the, the planning board nor the commissioners, if there's a dispute over a property line, we do not have the authority nor the jurisdiction to resolve that.
That's what I thought.
And I, I just want everybody to be clear about that. If we can't as a, the, you know, that's a, now, we pass where such things can be resolved, but that has to be resolved by court, not by either of, you know, either the planning board or the Board of Commissioners. I mean, we, we do not have that authority. So I just want everybody to be clear about that. We, you know, to the extent there's a dispute, we can't resolve it. If I heard Mr. Nado correct, I believe the, the neighbors are, are represented by Mr. Blackburn. And if so, I would encourage him to speak with him, um, about the steps they should take. Um, if they're concerned about this. But again, it, it is, um, and the other thing, I guess I've had trouble, uh, again, I've got about half the word, so I may admit something, I apologize. Um, is that, uh, just to be sure that whatever, if, if the board does take a dependent vote this evening, then it would still go to the commissioners. This is not, you know, again, if there, there's another step and as was pointed out, the planning board is advisory. And so it then goes to commissioners and I just want the, uh, uh, obviously the applicant is, you know, well versed and, uh, you know, very familiar with the process. I just wanna be sure, uh, that the family is aware of that, that will be in that step. And, uh, you know, Justin and Daniel, I, I'd be sure that if they get the, um, the, the date on that, when, when the night is done. And I will, I will hush because, uh, again, I, I don't wanna, don't wanna expand it, but I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have any discussions amongst ourselves? Entertaining a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies and objectives in the Pender two point O comprehensive land use plan five point one point D, five point one point E and five point one point K. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the neighborhood mixed use and median density residential future land use classification in the Pender two point O comprehensive land use plan.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I wanted to just inform everyone here that, again, this is not the last, uh, decision of this rezoning case. It will go next to the Board of Commissioners. Um, if you received a notice for this meeting, you will receive another notice for the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is scheduled for February twenty first, which is a Tuesday. Is that, is that right? Okay, so that's February twenty first on a Tuesday, that'll be in this room at the same time, at seven P M. But you will receive notices again and there will be another sign posted along St. John's Church Road prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Would take a brief few minutes recess to, um, let them.
Sure.
Thank you all for coming out.
Justin, he needs to, you would like to come in?
Yeah, please, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We, I can bring you out another one.
Would you mind?
I don't know.
Two shots.
I'll wait to tell you.
Let me grab this.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay.
You're hired.
No, I was like, wait. Trading.
You got some trade. These are pictures, run on a hundred, hundred fifty years ago, and then somebody comes along and says, oh, it's thirty years.
It's interesting.
Yeah, I know. We lost acres of map, we lost cross.
That Nixon.
For the, it's an arke.
You can go in, if you go to Porter's Neck, you can sign this. So all of those pieces, originally it was all one grant of land by the king. And then they sliced off those long strips, first to the water, because those were the bigger plant. There were multiple plantations, there was Poplar Grove plantation, there was Belvedere, whatever process I think it was called. Annandale plantation.
Right.
Because Hampstead used to be called Annandale. And then, um, then there was a couple other plantations, but I've looked at some of the deeds like around my stuff and gone way back and it's really interesting.
Really?
Yeah. And I have some historic records, because I was the president of a Belvedere Association for a while. And we kept all these historic records of all of what happened to, it started going back to like the seventeen hundreds.
State reasons?
Crazy.
I have this experience.
Yeah, very interesting. If you go across from the high school, there's a road called Annandale Trace.
That's all I?
Yes.
Okay, so Annandale is what, Annandale used to be hipster.
Yeah, you know, experience, you got, you wrote down, you were. I mean.
Yeah.
I think this is the first time I've ever reached this.
You guys know that, right? Hampstead used, used to be called a long time ago, Annandale.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So the, the, I was talking about the Nixons have a very long, long history. If you go down to Porter's Neck, there's a sign that says, beginning of the Nixon estate. And all, all of that was granted by the king. It was one huge, huge massive amount of land. And over time, they carved these strips out. And they became plant, the ones that were towards the water became plantations like Poplar Grove and Belvedere, whatever it was, I think it was called Annandale Plantation. And there were like a bunch of them all the way out to Jacksonville. It's pretty cool.
Thank you, sorry.
Ready? All right, continuing to ride along.
All right, yeah, so now we're on the item, um, that I added, requested to be added to the agenda earlier for a resolution. Um, I'm gonna distribute this to the members. Um, this is something I had distributed to the chairman and vice chairman and had gotten their approval. Let me pass this out just so that everyone has a copy of it and is aware of it. I don't, I mean, if the chairman wishes, we can go through it, but it may not be necessary. Well. Um, but essentially the resolution highlights the powers of the planning board and where those powers come from. And includes what those powers are in terms of making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners related to adopted plans. Um, furthermore, the document discusses, um, growth patterns the county is experiencing, which, I, I will read a section of this specifically for everyone's knowledge. Um, so in twenty twenty, after the twenty twenty census, the population was estimated for Pender County at sixty thousand four hundred and forty-one residents. The North Carolina Office of State and Budget Management, that's a probably a good accurate resource for population projections on the state and county level. Um, they project that between twenty twenty and twenty thirty, the population will increase by fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-five. And then between twenty thirty and twenty forty will increase by another ten thousand, uh, residents. And those are estimates, you know, they may be, um, not such an aggressive estimate, you know, but that's what they're, the state's anticipating. Um, which is a significant amount of residents to be added to the, to the county. Um, going from sixty thousand to, you know, eighty-five thousand or so in, in twenty years. And then it also discusses some other things that are going on, the Hampstead bypass, how that's going to bring a lot of change to the, the Hampstead area, particularly eastern Pender County in general, as well as, you know, further industrial development and expansion of infrastructure on Highway four twenty-one, which has the potential to, to change, um, western Pender County. And we expect to see a lot of commercial, industrial and residential development on that side of the county as well. Um, you know, the Pender County schools are, are overburdened at this time. They're pursuing options for new schools throughout the county. Um, this would help reexamine the land use patterns in the county to better make, to make better recommendations for, you know, a future land use plan update so that, you know, those new schools areas are considered and those new relatively undeveloped portions of the county are, are considered. Um, and then it talks about the, the U D O was updated or was adopted in twenty ten, June of twenty ten, which has received, you know, a, a good amount of updates, individual tax amendment updates. But it's in serious need of a rewrite and that's something that staff and the planning board are well aware of. But essentially, a comprehensive future land use plan would inform changes to the unified development ordinance. Therefore, staff, you know, after discussing this with planning board at the last meeting, would strongly recommend that the county would pursue a update to the future land use plan and follow that by a new unified development ordinance. And so essentially we are putting before you a resolution that would formally make this recommendation of the pursuit of a new comprehensive land use plan and new unified development ordinance to the County Board of Commissioners with the idea that we will bring this to their attention once we are going through the budget season, the upcoming budget cycle, um, to inform a request to fund these, um, enterprises. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to discuss. But essentially we are requesting approval by the board and we would like to have the, the signature of the chairman as well as the vice chairman.
All right, do we have any questions for staff?
I just think since we're discussing it, which is, you know, kind of rehashed the recent, this is here, as you just went over, but before I was even armed this, um, advisory board, the past staff then, um, attempted to have, to, to successfully put a U D A through it. It was not successful for a variety of reasons, COVID and, um, changes. Um, but even our past director was trying to attempt to change the U D O and here we are now again. Um, and, um, we have also made as a county numerous rezonings that in a sense have changed land use map. But just because they were zoned and weren't consistent with the future lands map. So I think it's reasonable to pursue this, um.
I totally agree.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think they're, you know, even though their, their projected population adds about twenty-five percent to Pender County, I, I still think they're kind of low balling it with, uh, fourteen thousand people. I know there's a lot, a lot of developments coming online. We still got the, that place at Rock Point down there that's, I don't, I guess it's on hold currently, but, um.
And Sidbury is, what, ten thousand plus units?
Lake Farms.
Yeah.
There are a lot of those.
And this will better guide that growth, you know, over the next ten, twenty years or so. And that's the real intention behind it.
Do you know if the, uh, if the schools are? Um, well, I mean, that's a twenty-five percent growth count, countywide. Um, you know, I'm sure the majority of it's gonna be in the Hampstead area. Um, do you know if the schools are gonna be, have adequate coverage?
Well, they, they, the county did pass the school bond referendum, uh, back in November, which will help establish funds moving forward to pay for renovations to existing schools as well as some new school facilities. Which the county is pursuing the, essentially identifying where those schools would be located. But nothing has been finalized at, at this point in time.
That's kind of maybe one of the reasons we need a new future land use map.
Absolutely.
Yeah, instead of playing catch-up, we need to.
Yeah, I think this is a recommendation for the best of the county to
Yeah.
to help us move forward in the right direction at the guidance of the commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can look at everything for the last two years, we think, um, that's come before us over there. It's, you know, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, essentially with schools and developers and, you know.
We have a new road that's not even on the map recognized.
Yeah. I agree a hundred percent with it.
I have no problem making my motion unless there's any other discussion from.
Do we need to make a motion to adopt this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I entertain the motion to adopt this.
Make a motion to adopt this resolution on January the fourth, twenty twenty-three, is the Pender County Planning Board, a resolution by the Pender County Planning Board recommending the pursuit of a new comprehensive land use plan and a new unified development ordinance for Pender County.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and members of the board. Um, if you guys could, uh, sign, you know, sign off on this while you're here. Um, I did wanna take a moment to kind of reintroduce Daniel Adams. So effective Monday of this coming week, Daniel Adams will be the acting director of the Planning and Community Development Department over planning and building inspections and permitting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Daniel.
So I'll, I'll go back to my previous role as senior planner, but will still be very much involved with, with the board here.
Thank you, Justin.
All righty. Do we have any other items on the, uh, that need to be discussed?
We don't have any other items for discussion this evening. I believe there's one rezoning case coming to the planning board in February.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
Is, is our choice of venue for Bergall here, is that, is that okay? Or is it something that we need to, uh, be looking into, uh, Hampstead? Is it a, is it a controversial one or pretty straightforward? Do you have?
If you bear with me one moment, sir.
Yes.
I'll give you a clear answer.
Okay.
Certainly closer to the annex.
We're actually under this. Yeah, so.
So there, there's a proposed rezoning off of Hoover Road, which has a significant amount of residential. Um, that is closer to the Hampstead Annex. If the board wishes, we could, could, could see if the room's available and move forward with a meeting at the Hampstead Annex in February.
Somebody like to make a motion to?
Make a motion and change the location of the February planning board meeting to Hampstead Annex.
And I will reach out to Parks and Rec, I'm sorry, Jeff. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
My apologies.
Nice.
Um, but I will reach out tomorrow to Parks and Rec to make sure there's no issue with the reservation of that room.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Are there any other items for discussion?
Well, uh, sir, since you asked, um, Christopher Hatcher, who is with us, um, he has departed Pender County. Well, if, uh, sir, since you asked, um, Christopher Hatcher, who is with us, um, he has departed Pender County. Uh, we are currently in the process of two, filling two current planner roles, which we hope to have filled within the next two to three weeks, just so that the board is aware.
Right.
We'll send you a couple candidates.
Uh, Mr. Attorney? Is he still here?
Mr. Thurman, are, can you hear us?
Uh, not really, but I can hear that.
Okay, it, you know, when, before Travis left, he had stated that fifteen members, or fifteen people in the planning department had came and, and, and gone in his tenure. Uh, seems an awful high turnover rate, and I was just wondering, you know, maybe, maybe the county needs to look at um, up and annie a little bit, per se, uh, you know, instead of Pender County being a stepping stone, maybe being a destination. Um, I know, you know, the budget's there, they're looking at the budget. Uh, what would be a good procedure to maybe suggest, maybe, you know, some of these people are need to be, you know, need, not, not such a high turnover rate. Maybe it's finances might be the option. I'm not sure what the option is, maybe, maybe having some, somebody kind of look into it. Uh, what are your thoughts, Mr. Thurman?
Well, uh, first of all, I, you know, it's, I have a limited ability to get involved in spending the city. Um, and for instance, when, and, you know, this is all public record, any employee's salary is public record.
Yes.
But Travis got basically a twenty-five percent increase to go to Southport.
Right, yeah, I, I understand, and they couldn't.
So I'm just, and, 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 you know, we all, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, the blind men in the elephant. Everybody gets their own part and sees it that way. And, but, you know, obviously, in a county, you know, that has multiple departments, you've got to look at all of us. And so, I, 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 now, the short answer is, you are all, you know, citizens of the county with the right to talk to elected officials. I cannot be in the position to suggest that you do so, because that would be overstepping my bounds.
Right, I, I totally understand that.
If you, if, if you feel that, you know, look, we're, again, the turnover is hurting, just like, again, the sheriff at last, but good season, aimed at the commissioners and said, I, yeah, so did Pender fire an E M S, which, they're not county employees, but you know, their budget is wholly dependent on county funding.
Right.
And, for instance, with Pender firing E M S, we did not raise taxes to pa, to give them the pay increase. We just went into county funds to do so.
I understand.
And, and again, I'm just saying, I, it means this is actual payment, I'm, I'm being very careful about how I answer this. That, you know, it's so, if there is to be more money allocated, then that has to be a decision that's made by the commissioners.
Right, yes, I understand.
And, right, and, and so, there's the, that's a long way of saying, you know, talk to board members and, you know, say, look, we, I, you know, um, uh, 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 again, and, well, and I was unaware that, uh, congratulations, Daniel, but um, I, you know, nobody was happy about Travis leaving. Frankly, I'm not sure that Travis was happy about Travis leaving. Uh, you know, but, oh, you know, somebody offers you, you know, twenty-five percent more, well, that's a pretty, you know, hefty little incentive. So and, you know, that was, I mean, Travis, you know, a joke, that, you know, it was the, you know, it had previously been the, you know, the Kyle Brewer Training Academy, and now it, it, it could be the, you know, the Brewer Handling, uh, you know, Training Academy. And so, I, you know, that is, I, yes. Um, now, we, we struggle with that, and, you know, I've been here, you know, longer than I want to say, but let's just say north of twenty years, we have always struggled with that, because, you know, we, we're not going to be able to compete salary-wise with the handover, Wilmington, and, and, and more and more than the case with Brunswick. Um, and, you know, for instance, if we had a nuclear power plant in Pender County, which it would be issued about, and I say that, but that starts you out at, you know, well over hours in that space, like Brunswick has, that you don't have to do anything for. You know, I mean, literally, they don't want you going inside their caves. So, I mean, it's a, you know, we're, we're in a very awkward situation. Um, it's not unique, you know, to a certain extent, we're always gonna be a bedroom community. I, you know, and we're, you know, to a certain extent, we're also a bedroom community for Cameron Green. And I know there's a different pronunciation now, but that's the way I grew up saying it for a lo, a lot of years, so forgive me. But um, anyway, I mean, but there, there's, the, again, a very long way of getting to a short answer of talk to the commissioners, and at budget time, if they wanna, if they can allocate more, then, you know, that can, can be there. And, you know, but that's, that is the only way, I, well, not the only way, but the most likely way. I mean, to be able to hold on to people is, you know, yeah, we're and, 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 just like, and we've done it with nurses, we've done it with deputies, we did it best. And I don't mean to diminish anyone, anyone that works is worthy of respect.
Absolutely.
The market dictates that certain skills are worked on. Doesn't mean you work any harder.
Right, yes.
You know, uh, uh, I mean, again, I, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, look, look, I, you know, I mean, off to him, I was speaking about Daniel with somebody outside, and, you know, you, we, we both were talking about what a good guy he was and how smart he was. But that doesn't mean he worked any harder than the people that, you know, provide generous. It means he has certain skills that they don't, and the market values those skills. So I'm not in any way suggesting that it's a, oh, but there's less value, there's not, but the market sets the monetary value. And, you know, sometimes that's just gotta be recognized, as it has been for nurses, as it has been for deputies, as it has been for a firing E M S. I mean, and, but that is a decision that the commission. So I, I apologize for going on too long, but I just, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give you the, 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 the best answer I can, and having, you know, again, I, I, I'm not saying I am, am wise in any way, but I do have experience, and there's a certain amount of, you know, it's not wisdom, at least reality that comes from, you know, having the experience of, you know, and, and it's a struggle we're always gonna have. Um, you know, we, you know, and we will never, you know, catch up with our neighbor to the south.
Well, yeah, I, I totally understand that. And I hate to put you on the spot, I just, you, you've, you've basically answered kind of what I was thinking. Um, you know, as a citizen, you talk to some of the commissioners and so forth, and see what they say. I, I was just curious if there's a, a high turnover rate in other departments as well. Um, um, you know, you, you get good people in, um, and then, and then the next thing you know, they're gone. Um, and, and that's unfortunate. It's, it's unfortunate. Um, no, no, you know, and, you know, I don't want to try to get into the politics of who makes what, and this, that, and the other, I don't, don't want to do that. I just, you know, um, you know, we're trying to look out for the future of Pender County here, and a good portion of that, or actually, the, the, our portion of that
And, and again, and I'm, yeah, and I'm not encouraging anybody to do anything, but I will say, you know, the commissioners have to look at, I don't even know exactly how many departments. And they have to look at how we're gonna, you know, fund the schools. And, I mean, they, there is, they're not as close to the needs of the pla, you know, the planning and community development aspect of this as you, as, as members of the planning board are, because it would be impossible for them to do so. And that's not, you know, it just, you, you know, that's, that could be, because they've also got to deal with the chef's department, and with the health department, and D S S, and I mean, you know, all those other things, and, and, and genuine needs, that they're, you know, uh, again, there, there, there simply is not enough time in anybody's day to have that kind of focus. And so, and, you know, part of your role is to be advisory. And so if you think, I, you know, we'd like to, you know, again, individually collectively, that we think that maybe we need to look at our funding for, you know, our, 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 our staff salaries on that, that is entirely appropriate. Again, I can, I cannot take a position on that. That would be overstepping my bounds. I'm not, and I am, I want to be clear, I am not doing that. But if you as an individual, or the board as a whole, just like you did with, you know, recommending the, you know, the, 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 looking at the, you know, the company U D O stuff, if that is what you feel as the advisory board, that is entirely appropriate for you. It's not for me. You know, again, I have a different role, and that has nothing to do with how I feel about, you know, the, you know, anybody in planning or anything else. That's just, that's not, that's not my lane. Um, so, I, and again, I apologize for, for going on, but, you know, that's what all yours do, so, um, anyway.
Thank you.
Any, anything else? And again, I know you're saying, no, just shut up, show your journal, go home, but if there's anything else, I'll be happy to go to address it.
Well, Trez, Daniel, Mr. Chairman, I just do feel a little bit of an obligation to say anything as I'm stepping into this management role. That, that's certainly something that I've recognized in the past three and a half years, and while I don't set the budget or the salary for the folks in the office, there are other things that we can work on internally. And that's been, you know, discussed department-wide, county-wide, so we're, we're working to make improvements in that realm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I'm not aligned by addressing the issue, right?
Well, it's a good point, yeah.
Do we have anything else?
So earlier I did issue uh, applications for reappointment. I appreciate all of you for, for reapplying for reappointment and showing an interest in Pender County um, over the past few years. Um, those appointment applications will go to the Board of Commissioners meeting later this month, and then you will be reappointed prior to um, you know, the February Planning Board meeting. But, so thank you for your service to Pender County.
Absolutely, thank all of you. Each and every one of you, thank you. I'm entertaining a motion.
I'm sorry, do we already talk about the next meeting date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and we've changed venue.
That's right, okay.
Is the date okay?
It's, it's a Tuesday, correct?
That was a Tuesday, yes.
I just want.
That was a Tuesday, yes. All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thurman, thank you, sir.
Thank you all, everybody be safe going home. The Danny Frisky wants a hundred, thank you, buddy.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
There you go. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
Try to get a clean copy.
Ready?
Yep.
Oh, Lord, you've got a free.